Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gondorlos.
Here.
Maryka.
Here.
Norca.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truce.
Here.
Vanderwaal.
Present.
And Bear Moss.
Here. Well, tonight for the invocation, Councilmember Northwood will be giving the invocation. So I invite those of you who wish to stand for that invocation. We're going to follow that with a pledge of allegiance.
All right, let's pray. Heavenly Father, as we anticipate the season of Easter and the renewal and joys of spring, we ask for your gracious mercy and blessings upon our city. We pray too that you would bless and protect our residents, our staff, and all those who work in and visit the city of Granville. We are mindful, Lord, of the abundance of our blessings as a community, and ask that those of us who are able might be inspired to be your hands and feet to our neighbors and me. Finally, Lord, we ask you to guide this council tonight and always to act in accordance with your will as we work toward the betterment of our community. Lead each of us to embrace civility, humility, and service of those who have entrusted us with these positions. We pray this in all things, in Jesus' name.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justin, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Okay, before we clear the agenda for tonight's meeting, is there a motion to approve the agenda? So move support. Motion support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. We also have two sets of minutes. The first one from the February 24 regular meeting. Extensive minutes. Very, very nice, Marcy. Is there a motion to approve those minutes or otherwise any additions, corrections?
Sub move.
Motion.
Forward.
And it's forward. Any other comments, questions? Jer.
Actually, the heading says March 10. Otherwise, okay. Anything else was good?
All right. We'll change that to February 24. So I'm assuming that's okay with the people who made the motion support.
Yeah, it was March.
I think March 10 is correct. I think it's.
Also, it's the January as well.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Okay, so we'll go ahead and approve those minutes. All right, any other comments? Not all of us in favor, please say yes.
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 And the opposition, please say no. All right, now the minutes from March 17. That was our special budget work session last week. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Sub move.
Support. Motion support. Any comments, questions, corrections? Not all of us in favor of approving those, please say yes. Yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Great. Presentation of the bills. Okay, Griffin, tonight, just bills in the amount, just over half a million dollars. Anything you'd like to bring up to us before we open up for questions?
Sure, I'm happy to highlight a few. You make a great point. Bill amount this meeting is just over half a million dollars. It's a little bit less than our kind of our standard meeting. That's more in that eight hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand dollar range. Nevertheless, a lot of exciting work getting done in town. I'll highlight a couple bills. The first one's going to be on the pre-written check register to Pyrotechnico Fireworks, Inc. in the amount of twelve thousand dollars. This is the pre-show deposit for the Fourth of July fireworks for this year. So hard to believe that that's right around the corner, but that is nevertheless very exciting. Moving on to the regular checklist, invoicing the amount of twelve thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars to Advanced Metals. This is the safety railing at the Clean Water Plant that was approved November 25th. As you all may remember, we're kind of phasing that in and replacing kind of a chunk of railing, I think we have for a couple of years now. Moving on, we have CDW Government in the amount of eight thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. This is miscellaneous IT equipment, some printers and wireless access points. Much of that was over at the PD and the court. Moving on, Local Media Inc., DVA First Do, invoicing the amount of eight thousand one hundred dollars. This is an annual software description for the fire department. We had a relatively high invoice for More and Grudge Inc. This one was in the amount of sixteen thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars. Eleven thousand of this was engineering associated with the ongoing aeration blower system project at the Clean Water Plant, and then also some miscellaneous design work for the upcoming road projects, Kenowa, Wallace, and Third and First, and so on and so forth. Did want to highlight a couple relatively small invoices, but it was kind of interesting for me to identify this time, both Forensic Fluids Laboratory and Madox Diagnostics. Both are in the amount of, one was just over a thousand and one was three hundred and thirty-two dollars. These are both the drug tests that our local court administers from time to time, from people going through their process. Just kind of interesting learning more about how often they do those. We have an invoice in the amount of just under seventy thousand dollars to Plumber Environmental Services. This is for the water service inspections. And then lastly, United Commercial Service, Inc., invoicing the amount of six thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars. This is our monthly custodial and cleaning services. But just a couple ones I felt might be interesting to highlight, but other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have about any of the other invoices.
Great. Questions for Griffin on any of the bills tonight? Yeah, can I, is there a motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of five hundred forty-four thousand three hundred and nine dollars and seventy-eight cents?
Sub move.
Motion?
Forward.
Forward.
Yeah, support. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? No? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Maryka.
Yes.
Norca.
Yes.
Eestra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Yonnerlos.
Yes.
And Bear Moss.
Yes. Well, tonight we have a presentation from our friends at the city of Wyoming, Aaron Vis, who I've got to know through Friends of Buck Creek, and also Jamie Fleming, going to talk about her big project they've got, we've all got coming up.
Everybody knows.
You're kind of spearheading it, since we buy it from you. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you for having us. We appreciate the opportunity to come here and talk about, you know, as the mayor's side of some cool projects that we have going on, as well as where we're at with maybe some contracts and rates going over that are happening in the region. And so my name is Aaron Vis. I'm the director of Public Works. I've been in this role for all of four days now. So some of you may remember Myron Erickson down at the city over 30 years. He retired last Thursday, and I was promoted into his role. Then with me is Jamie Fleming. She is the superintendent of our drinking water plant. She's been in her role for a little over a year now. Name you may be familiar with, that she replaced with Bob Inacloes, and he retired after like 40 years in the water industry about a year ago. And so we're new to our roles. We're not new to the city. Both of us have been employed for 18 years in various capacities at Water Waste or Public Works. So again, thank you for having us, and we're excited to share what we have going on with you. So go for it, Jamie.
So I want to start with first an overview of the Wyoming water system, which is the system that serves Granville as well. So you can see here, this map encompasses our entire service area. So back in the 1960s, some very visionary men came up with the idea that, hey, it's getting hard to get water out of the ground. Just accessing it was hard. There was contamination going on and growth was happening. And so they thought, well, we've got this big lake kind of a few miles down the road. Maybe that's a great source for water. And in the process of that, they thought, you know, goodness, we can partner with the communities around us and make this a very collaborative project. So we have been endeavoring this since the 1960s. Lots of things have happened in between that time and now, and we're about to tell you about some more things that are going to happen. Because apparently, when you reach age 60 in a water system, you got to start doing some things, and the list starts to grow quite rapidly. So this is our entire service area on the west end. There is the lake. Our system is about 30 miles, 32 miles from end to end. So you'll find yourselves kind of in the middle of that nestled next to the city of Wyoming. But we serve 11 communities altogether, and that is about 250,000 people. So we can produce up to 120 million gallons of water in a day. That's really hard to envision. So, you know, 120 million jugs of milk, I guess it would look like. I don't know what that looks like, you know, stacked all together, but it's a lot of water. In the wintertime, we average about 30 million gallons a day. That is what we need to run businesses, cook, clean, consume. And in the summertime, we often are bumping up close to 100 million gallons a day in a really hot, dry stretch. Much of that is related to irrigation and other fun activities that you do in the summer that require a lot of water. So I want to touch quickly on the cost of water. Obviously, you all have a distribution system that you have to manage. You have costs associated with that. They're going to look very similar to what you see here, but these are also the costs that we have going on at the treatment plan itself. So first and foremost, I always want to call out our people. We have a staff of 32 at the treatment plan out there. It is a pretty lean staff considering what we do and the size of the facility, and we've got amazing people working for us. And then the other things, of course, that you see here are kind of day-to-day things, the chemicals that it takes to treat the water to make it safe for people to consume, the energy, lots of that in the summer when we're putting lots of water out the door, just day-to-day upkeep of the building. We have our own laboratory. We also serve your system through that laboratory and all of the other communities that we serve. Technology and software to make our lives easier and to get you the data that you need and fuel for backup power. So just know that if, you know, we have a power outage, we're still going to be able to serve you. So that's one side of the cost of water. The other side of the cost of water, of course, is capital and infrastructure. So this is the big things, right? These are the long-term things that we need to put in place to have a system that is appropriate for what is here today and for what it may need to look like in the future. So pipes and pumps and buildings, security to make sure that we are safe in everything that we do, generators in case the power goes out, additional treatment processes or upgrading those, monitoring things that are happening in the process system, and then our laboratory instruments. So I want to focus a little bit on the capital side of things because we're going to talk about some projects that we have coming up, and it's good to understand what it is that drives the need for those things to happen. So first and foremost, obviously, if something is in bad condition or it has failed, we are going to react to that, and we're going to make sure that we are making those repairs. This happens from time to time. You have a great crew here that's, you know, fixing water mains from time to time. This is that same kind of thing. Asset management, so this is our proactive planning for the future, making sure that we're replacing things before they fail. This is the ideal world to live in, is that you're getting to this before you have any sort of catastrophic thing happen. Redundancy also is something that can come into play. So we love to have at least two of everything ideally, because if one goes down, we can use the other one. And the last piece that drives big capital projects is just the demand for water. And so there are a couple of ways that that happens. Your any given highest day in the year is what tells us how big our treatment plant needs to be. In your system, that determines whether or not you might need an additional water source. So kind of think of those as, you know, similar paths there. And then in the single highest hour through the day, that's what tells us how much water storage we need to have, and that is meant to meet those demands. And then if you should have something like a fire, you have enough water in play to be able to meet that additional need at that moment in time. And no presentation on water gets away free without a water pun, so there's yours. What are we up to? So I'm going to run through a few projects that we have coming up. I know Griffin was meeting with us recently, and we talked through some of these, and that's kind of why he invited us here tonight. So some of these are currently ongoing. Some of them will be starting here in the near future. So we currently have two large pipes that leave the treatment plant that take the water away from the plant to the communities that we serve, here to your community and all of the others. We need a third one. We can only put enough water through those two to really meet the kind of demands that we have right now. We know that growth is going to happen, and we want to be able to support that as it goes on in the future. So we'll be breaking ground for this here in August. This is a project that's been about eight years in the making, so it's really exciting to see it come to this point finally. Along with that project came the need for this next one, surge suppression. So obviously, if you have filled a bathtub and you slam the, you know, the water faucet shut, sometimes you hear that bang that happens in your house, right? That's that water hammer of that water slamming into the pipes. That's not a good thing when you have a very large system that you need to protect. So along with this third transmission main, we will be putting a system in place that will manage any of those surges going through the pipes that will keep them from rupturing over time. We have here at Gazan Station, may or may not mean anything to you, other than you may know where Gazan Parkway is. So this is over by the U of M Hospital over there. This is a station that provides some additional pumping for us. It moves water into the city of Wyoming and Kentwood and Byron and Gaines Townships. So we have a couple of projects happening there. We have some other things happening with the pumps at the plant that push the water out the door. We just finished the first phase of those. We're going to enter the second phase. We have 10 altogether, so we've done four. We have six more to go. The filter renovation project, so filtration is the last step in the process for treatment. It is our final barrier of things being removed from the water before it comes into the system. That'll happen over the next few years. That's going to be a big undertaking. That's, that'll be a lot. Second intake here that you'll see, so we currently have one pipe that goes out into Lake Michigan that brings the water in. It's served as well for 60 years. We just need another one because we only have one, and like I said, we'd love to have two of everything. So this is something that the state has come to us to say, you need to put this redundancy in place. We've been working on this for a while. This won't be built until probably until about 2028, '29, but this is a very long lead-up project. Anytime you're working in Lake Michigan and on the lakeshore, there's a lot that has to happen there. We're doing some additional condition assessment on our transmission mains. We have one that is 1990s vintage-ish, and we've had a couple of failures over the last five years. So we want to get into that pipe and take a look at it and see what we can do there to extend its lifetime. We should be able to get longer life out of it than we already have. So we have a company that's, this is what they do. They specialize in this. They're going to give us a good plan. We're adding an additional treatment, a generator at the treatment plant. We only have two right now. We really could use a third one as we need to put more water out the door. And then the last piece here is cybersecurity and physical security upgrades. Technology keeps moving faster than the rest of us can keep up with. We did a great assessment with cybersecurity assessment team and EPA last summer, and they gave us some great recommendations, and we're slowly making our way through those. So just know that we're doing everything we can to protect the system even from those kinds of threats. I'm going to let Aaron talk about this lovely diagram that we have here that's really handy.
So don't expect you to memorize this or even understand it. That's for Jamie and I to worry about and figure out. But in 2023, we hired Prime and New Huff, a firm that may be familiar to some of you, to do a reliability study. Same thing that Charlie does for your water system, you know, we also do for our treatment plant transmission system and our own distribution system. And one of the outcomes of that was a table that has scared us a little bit. And what this table is showing us is that, Jamie talked about the capacity of our plant being 120 million gallons. So our plant has a capacity at which we can produce water. Transmission mains have a capacity if they can transmit water. The intake has a capacity at which it can pull in water. And because of the, you know, we're 60 years old, and as all of our communities have grown, we're starting to meet the limits of these capacities. And so what this chart shows is that, you know, essentially, it's a list of projects over the next 40 years, from 2023 to 2045, major projects that we will have to do at the plant, at the intake, or in the transmission system to increase the capacity to support the growth. And so there's a number in the way bottom left side of 606, and that's really in millions of dollars. If we were to grow in the same way, shape, and form as we currently are, that's what we're going to have to spend over the next 20 years. And so in a couple slides, I'm going to talk about rates and contracts and how some of these projects come into play, because honestly, neither of us are really too keen on spending this amount of money in the next 20 years if we can afford not to. If we can delay, if we can defer some of these projects, if we can manage our water better, what it means is that our rate payers don't have to support these sorts of things. So again, this is just a glimpse in a little bit of our world and the big picture capital projects that potentially are coming down the line.
So we have been talking about, and we just saw, what, like 600 million dollars worth of projects that are on the list. And Aaron and I are always concerned about, you know, how can we structure that in a way that we are ensuring that it is the right time and that we're being responsible with the dollars that we are stewards of? So in this year, we have undertaken what we're calling a water system optimization study, and these are the goals that this study is built around. We're partnering with Fishbeck on this project. They have done several of these projects for large systems across the state, including like Great Lakes Water Authority on the east side of the state. And the whole point behind this is to really get an understanding of how the water system operates as a whole. So we know how each of the pieces and parts works, but we don't often look at it as one big gigantic system. And that's really how we wanted to approach this project, so that we can understand what can happen in each of the communities in any given place that may allow us to put a smaller capital project in place that would help us delay some of these big-ticket items that we were just looking at. I don't think we're going to get away from any of these. I don't think they're going to get dropped off the list at any point in time, but if we can push them out even two, five, 10 years, that's just that much more time that people can have more dollars in their pocket instead of needing to pay for those rates. So that's our ultimate goal here. So we're going to look at the things that are driving demand, so how water is used and how each community is using water and when. We're trying to reduce those demands, if at all possible, by some smaller projects. We're going to take a look at our own Gazan pumping station and hopefully develop some deficiencies there that will help the communities that are on this far end of the system. And then we're going to take all of this foundational data, and really, that's going to help us evaluate when and if we need to do projects, how that's going to impact rates over time. And ultimately, my favorite little piece of this, because I just recently learned the value of a water model and what it can tell you, it's like wizardry. I kind of, I'm digging it. So we are building a regionalized water model that will incorporate every community's water model into one large system model. So right now, we have communities that come to us and say, I need to connect to your system and others connection. You might want another connection. And we look at those as a point-to-point kind of interface, but what we want to look at is how this affects the entire system as a whole, so that we're not creating winners and losers in any of these scenarios.
So I'm going to talk really about two things as it relates to rates and contracts. Give you a regional perspective and then really how it relates to Granville as a city. So in 2023, Wyoming hired a company called Stantec to do a rate and contract evaluation. And Stantec is an international firm. They specialize in engineering and rate consulting. You might have heard the name Raftalus. That's another entity that's big in this area or in that world. But we hired Stantec to come in and look at, from a retail and wholesale perspective, what are our rates look like? How are they structured? And understand the relationships that we have within Wyoming and with all of our wholesale customers. And to do an evaluation and say, look, here's what we understand your future is, your business operations are, your relationships are. Here's what we recommend as a future way of setting up your rates. And so we started with Ottawa County. Their contract is the oldest one we have from 1988, so it's high time it got updated. And so we've been working with them and with Stantec over the last two years to update our rate model. And we went into this with the philosophy or strategy that, at its core, we're all in this together. Jamie showed you the map at the beginning of the 11 wholesale customers, the quarter million people that we provide water for. And as you know, you know, a resident of Granville doesn't just work in Granville. They may work in Granville, they may live in Byron Center, vice versa, something like that. So, you know, our approach overall to this is it's a regional system, and we're all in this together, but we're all in this together at one point, to a point. And then at some point, if you're a growing community, then you should pay for more, a greater share of those projects that are causing need for expansion. If you're a stable community, then maybe you need to pay as much. And so with that as kind of the core philosophy, we talked through what are our priorities? And we came up with these, working again with Stantec, these five on the right side of your screen. So whatever we do with water rates, we want it to be economically stable. We don't want huge varied fluctuations. I think you as rate centers don't want these massive swings in your water sewer rates. We don't either. We want to be able to plan these projects, plan our own M cost so that there is relative stability in how we're doing this, and also have that information available to you as a wholesale customer. The current rate model that we have, you know, as Jamie will probably have an agreement, we can't do that very well. And so the new paradigm we're looking for is giving us the ability to do that. The second thing we want to do is be equitable in cost recovery. So again, this, Jamie talked about demand, a max day and a peak hour demand. Those types of water usage patterns stress our system and cause increased costs on our system. So we want to have a rate model that's set up to where if you as a community are causing those things, then you should pay a greater share of those costs that are driving those need for capital projects, increase in electricity rates or chemical usage, whatever it is. We want something that's easy to administer. We don't want a 500-page, 500-tab Excel spreadsheet that nobody here can explain. We want it to be able to administer from a planning's perspective and also transparent. We can come to you and say, hey, here's what's going on, here's why, and you can easily understand and share with your constituents. The last thing we want is something that is consistent with industry practice. You know, there's something to be said for innovation, and as we're working through the contract with Ottawa County, there's pieces of that, but also understand that there is a standard, there is, you know, an industry-wide way of doing things, and we want to follow that. So those, again, overall, we're all in this together, but yet here are some key things that no matter if you're Ottawa County, Granville, Kentwood, Byron, wherever you are, these things will apply to you. So specific to Granville, Granville's water contract with us was signed in 2011, the same year that Kentwood and Byron and Gaines Townships were. And so with Ottawa County, we're probably 90% of the way through that contract. We have a series of meetings coming up even this week where we're starting to really dive into that contract language. And once we're really comfortable with that is when we'll start sharing it with, you know, you as communities and Charlie and Jamie and, you know, your team here, so that, you know, you can kind of get to see what's likely coming within the next year. Because our plan is that, once we have the contract with Ottawa County in place, we'll go to, you know, you guys as a city of Granville, Kentwood, Byron and Gaines, and really try to bring everything up to a 2025 contract instead of an 88 and a 2011 one. So when it comes to rates, and Jamie kind of alluded to this, I'd like to point it out. So Wyoming, you know, we're responsible for providing water to the Granville city boundary, and then the city of Granville is responsible for taking that water, storing it, taking their own distribution system. So when we talk water rates, there's really two components to it. There's a component of us bringing it to your city doorstep, the city boundary doorstep, and then there's a component of you bringing it from, you know, your city boundary to your constituents' doorsteps. And so I think what's interesting is people always want to compare how do our rates compare to adjoining community rates, and they don't understand sometimes that there's these two components. So there's the, you know, our, the rate that we're providing water to Granville may increase 5%, 10%, may go down 5% or 10%, but you may have a capital project in your system that's causing those rates to increase far more than what, you know, our water rates are to you. So just to summarize, as Jamie talked about, the number of projects we have going on, the cost of providing water is increasing, and it will continue to increase going forward. So Wyoming, we've raised our rates in the last three years about 30%, and that's going to continue going forward, 5%, 10% a year in the next, I don't know, three or four years as we get through infrastructure improvements that we're trying to do, as well as all these projects that are coming online. So that is what we have. We have a nice picture of our water plant. I don't know if any of you have been there. You're always welcome for a tour.
Absolutely.
And then inside, on the right-hand side, is just some of our nice, clean and neat piping. Happy to answer any questions.
Was it, Randy, I just had a, excuse me, a quick glimpse of your map, but here's your supplying water for Ottawa Township, or excuse me, Georgetown Township, London, Jamestown, one of the other ones.
Yeah, let me go back to that real quick. All of them blended in townships, Howland Charter Township, and through them, a portion of Zeeland Township. Georgetown, Hudsonville, Jamestown, Granville, Byron and Gaines Township, Kentwood, and then of course Wyoming.
You don't provide water for the city of Zeeland?
No. They have their own treatment system, different arrangement there.
We have an interconnect with the city of Howland. And, and we will move water back and forth to maintain, you know, good water in that main, but it's really meant for redundancy as a backup. So if Howland has an issue in their system with their plant, we can provide them with water and they can do the same with us. And obviously, we can provide them with more water than they can give us, but it's just nice to have that as a backup.
Do you have an agreement like that with Grand Rapids in place?
Yes. And we have interconnects with them throughout our system.
Thank you.
I think this map is also really helpful, just for the council to see, you know, one of the, I think, important components of this new rate structure on the wholesale side that Wyoming's working on is kind of this concept of a growing community versus stable community and what that impacts on your rates. Obviously, you all know even better than I do that, you know, a lot of these Ottawa County townships, particularly directly to our west, have seen tremendous growth in the last few years. And many of them have a lot more potential for tremendous growth, where communities like ours that are relatively built out probably don't have as dramatic of a change as anticipated. And I think that's part of the principle that Wyoming is trying to take into account of, what does that mean in terms of giving a community equitable rates and at the same time recognizing the, we're all in this together regional concept.
Need to expand, correct. And growth is one piece of it, but the other piece of it is demand. I mean, you could have, you could have a community that's not growing, but all of a sudden, everybody decides they want a green lawn, and this peak hour and peak day demands that we talked about really drive up that demand, even if your community as a whole, the population is remaining stable.
Or if you get a new industry that, for whatever reason, the, the, the character by which they use water, you know, those are all things that I don't think many of us think about on a day-to-day basis, but it definitely has major impacts for someone like Wyoming when they're producing water for that organization.
And to that point, that's one of the limitations of the, of how the current contracts are arranged, is there's set capacities and those don't change. And how we're structuring these news, new ones, again, with that, those core concepts in mind, is that if you have a, a community that, you know, a dairy processor comes in and uses a ton of water, you know, before you were kind of stuck. And now if that comes in, how we're structuring the new contracts is that, hey, you can do that. And there's some flexibility built into, to, to go do like, doing those sorts of things.
Yeah, out of curiosity, on the map, are the existing lines, the red ones?
Yes.
Okay, and the black line is?
Proposed. So if you look, the Olive Township, Howland Charter Township on the left side, you can kind of see there's a parallel line, the line kind of connecting all three of them. That's the first phase of the third transmission main. So the first phase is going to go north, run along Van Buren, and then, and then drop in south and interconnect with the existing 54 and the 42-inch. And that cost for that is $86 million between that and the surge suppression system.
Is your contract with Ottawa County or with the individual townships that you serve?
Good question. It's with Ottawa County.
It's interesting. Yeah, it is interesting.
Kind of like, I think the sewer system was that way too. They actually had a contract with Ottawa County and then Ottawa, it was through the road commission, actually.
They have a kind of a unique arrangement that not all counties have, where they have definitely taken some more leadership when it comes to coordinating the utility systems. I know on our side for the sewer, it's pretty nice because it serves as a single point of contact, and then they almost serve as the intermediary between individual local units.
And if you think back, you know, I mentioned that contract was in 1988, that wasn't, that's the most recent contract. The original contract is from the 1960s when Wyoming built its plant there, the contract is with Ottawa County. So and then since 1960s to today, I mean, you get how these townships have really grown and, you know, it didn't look like that 60 years ago.
How far out into Lake Michigan is your intake currently?
About, about a mile.
A mile?
Yeah.
The, the one that you're going to be building, then is going to be the same?
Yes, it'll be parallel to that, the one that is existing. We have a single station that has the pumps that draw the water in. The second intake really is for that redundancy. In the future, you can see, you know, if we go back to that step chart that Aaron was talking about, we will need to build a second station with more pumps to be able to draw more water. But that's our, our first step is just to get that redundancy in there.
Grand Rapids has two lines out, is that right or no?
I believe they do.
I think they do too.
I think they do too.
Do you know if others are out there?
Similar. It's a good distance away from the shore, you don't get real, a lot of influence from weather patterns or runoff. Lake Michigan has an incredible source for water.
Which is really shallow, it takes a long time for it to get deep, so.
Yeah, right, yeah, but, yeah, you want it deep, right?
Yeah.
Paul, that was really consistent with the, the water plant we had in South Haven as well, that was, that out of the lake. It always kind of surprised people when they were concerned about different things happening on the shore and how that would impact the water, and we'd have to explain that pipes out there a mile, nothing happening on the shore. It's really impacting that.
So that's a really great overview of kind of long-term, big picture. What is kind of the next step that we're going to look at?
So I can probably help with that one a little bit more mayor. So I, I think they did a really nice job of explaining how our water rate, so the rate that our customers in Granville pay is really made up of two important pieces. There's the piece that Wyoming contributes to, which is the wholesale water rate, the rate that we purchase water from them. And then there's the, the cost of our local distribution system. So we have hired a, a rate consultant that will be presenting to you all at the next budget workshops on April 21st. And that rate consultant is doing an analysis of both the impacts that Wyoming's projects over the next 10, 20-plus years, but also the imminent local projects that we have. So when we talk about water main replacements under a lot of the roads that we're doing, the meter replacements and so on and so forth, and they're essentially doing an assessment of both and going to come back to you all with some recommendations in terms of what we're going to have to do to our rates to make sure that they can be, they can sustainably fund the system, that they can be justified to the public and all of the other kind of points that they mentioned that they've been considering for Wyoming's side.
And you're not unique with that, you know, we've talked, we met, you know, we have the same aged infrastructure. You know, Wyoming has, became a city in this, in the early 60s, late 50s, and so our infrastructure is, a lot of it's the same age as yours, and that's its lifespan. We're also embarking on a massive meter change out, AMI change out. So a lot of the things that you're doing as a city, you know, we're, we're also doing in, in the same kind of situation.
And that's a, a large part of the reason I, I asked the Wyoming team to come, is because they're a big part of our rates and our ability to provide service. And we'll also have this workshop where Charlie will go over in a lot more detail the local projects we have, and then we'll move into that third piece, which will be this rate consultant presenting on what we're likely going to have to do to our rates over the next several years to make sure they're, they're at the level they need to be at. So again, I definitely appreciate you all being here and kind of taking the time, because this is a very important kind of set-the-stage piece for a, a large part of what drives our rates.
Can I give one follow-up, please? Thank you. So the $86 million you talked about was from the third line, but that's still drawing off one intake out of the lake?
Yes.
That would be a second phase of that.
Correct.
So that'd be the biggest additional expense after that.
Yes.
And all three lines will be drawing off your one intake?
Correct. So as we talk about projects, you know, Aaron kind of alluded to earlier, we're always focusing on whatever the pinch point in the straw is, right? So wherever we're kind of pinched down a bit, that's where we're headed next. So that third transmission main, that first phase is going to get us more capacity from there. We'll have to do these other things to bring us, keep us moving forward. I think it's also important to understand that none of this is random, I promise you. So we have data behind all of this, and when we get to like 85% demand in the summer of our capacity, the state comes to us and says, you need to start thinking about these projects that are out there on the horizon. We talked about, you know, it took eight years to get to the points of breaking ground on this third transmission main, none of this happens quickly. So we're not just pulling projects out of the air, this is all driven by data and science and good engineering.
Regulations.
And that's the scene threshold that you hear us talk about from time to time when it comes to our regional sewer plant that we operate. When you get to about that 80% threshold, you definitely start to hear from the state and they start going, okay, what's your plan? Because as we all know, I mean, over time, these capacities are just going to continue to go up, just both based on the growth in the region, but the additional usage of a lot of the things that we do. So we're in a similar point when it comes to kind of the sewer system as well, where you have to start thinking definitely longer term.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for having us.
Appreciate it. Sounds like a lot of work.
It's fun. Love every minute of it.
We'll get it done, don't worry.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Anybody here tonight like, time for public time? Like to address the council, just come on up to the podium, give us your name, address, and tell us what you're looking for. Kyle, welcome.
I just want to thank you guys again for the support that you've given us for the tree Granville. Currently today, we have sold 57 trees and we are at 2,050 approximately. So we've got one week to go yet, so we're going to get through that last little bit too, I think. So thank you very much.
Thanks for keeping track of all that, Kyle. Anybody else like to address the council? Please just come on up, get your name, address. Tell us what you're thinking about. Anybody? Okay, if not, under ordinances and resolutions, first is a request for a charitable gaming license from the Granville Walker Foundation. Welcome.
Hi.
Sounds like Fourth of July, is it Fourth of July project?
Yes, it is a Fourth of July project. So we were already talking about Fourth of July earlier, so it's coming right up. My name is Tara Tacken Westphir, I am the secretary on the Granville Walker Foundation Board. I am here tonight requesting approval for a resolution so that we can get our gaming license and perform a raffle in, with the Fourth of July events in the city of Granville.
Okay. Griffin, anything you want to add to it, or Chief, any concerns you have?
Only thing I'll add is, I, I just know, as you do, that, you know, Teresa Mendering has graciously agreed to help us coordinate this year's Fourth of July festivities. And one of the things that she's been doing is trying to think of new additional and creative ways to make sure we're bringing in the donations that we need to be able to put on a good event. And in partnership with the, the foundation, they had a great idea that would be kind of mutually beneficial to both community organizations, which would be to host a 50-50 raffle, to try to, ones for interest for these festivities, but also serve as an additional donation generating source. So what they would be looking to do is conduct a 50-50 raffle in the weeks leading up to the event, with 50% of the proceeds obviously going to the winner of the raffle, but the other 50% being split, so 25% of the total, if that makes sense, would be donated to the city of Granville to help support the Fourth of July celebration.
Okay, great. Any other questions? If not, we have a proposed resolution.
Can Teresa say one thing?
Just in full transparency, I want to make it known that I am a board member of the Granville Walker Foundation, so I want everyone to know that. I don't see it as a conflict of interest. They give that to both communities, but the mapping of the finances for, I don't want to be too, put that out there before. And it's not quite 25% because it would be 50% minus the cost of putting the event on, and then we would split 50-50 of the remains. So the cost won't be astronomical, but there is some cost to running anything, so just to follow this course of that before you, thank you.
Great. We do have before us a proposed resolution number 3367. City attorney has pointed out one small, tiny little typographical layer about the spelling of the city toward Granville, so we'll correct that on the top. But anyway, resolution 3367 recommending that the state approve the charitable gaming license for the Granville Walker Foundation. Mr. Motion for that effect.
Support.
Matt Marcy, would you call a role?
Councilmember Norca?
Yes.
Sainz?
Yes.
Vanerel?
Yes.
Donnellos?
Yes.
America?
Fantastic, thank you all.
Thank you. The next item we have is proposed ordinance number 318 regarding peddling and solicitation. Griffin, would you like, or Matt?
Thank you.
It's a great word, isn't it? Peddling, it just sounds so 1800.
It does, yes. This is a genesis of a conversation that Chief Englem and I had, followed through up with a conversation with the city attorney. The season is fastly approaching. The police department's already gotten a few complaints about peddling without a license. By ordinance, by section 12-2 of our code ordinances, need a license from the clerk's office to peddle or solicit in the city of Granville. Currently, the ordinances are both, are violation for the ordinances or misdemeanors, which makes it more difficult for the police department to enforce. Obviously, they can certainly enforce misdemeanors, however, is that a reasonable thing for someone peddling without a license? Over the last number of years, we've gone through our, this code of ordinances and taken many of a code violations and turned them from misdemeanors into civil infractions. This is exactly what we're doing here. So instead of a misdemeanor, it'd be a civil infraction to peddle or solicit without a license in Granville. Pretty straightforward, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
You can get a license to do this? Do you get, do you get any of those?
Yeah, so if you think, I mean, I guess the easiest way to think about it is door-to-door sales. It's not uncommon for AT&amp;T and other different companies to, to go around and kind of knock on doors and try to sell things. It's probably not incredibly common, but it, it does happen.
The summer speak time, a lot of window sales, roofing sales. Again, we're not focused on the kids selling, you know, candy bars or whatever, field trips. We're, we're not kind of courting the license, but it's the commercial type operations.
Got a question. If it's considered a municipal civil infraction, then do those fines come into the city as a, and what would happen if it's a misdemeanor? Would it's the fine?
Good question, Mr. Mayor. There would be court costs associated, like every civil infraction, say for a code enforcement, they do have to appear in front of the magistrate through our prosecutor still. There are fines associated with that set by the court. A lot of that will go to the state, we only get a small portion of that, because this is not a money-making maneuver on our side, it's more giving our officers the right tools out in the field to do their job to enforce the ordinances for the people.
And I think, let's also highlight real quick again, my local units of government tend to have registrations for these types of activities. It's, it's not necessarily to prevent people from doing it, but by requiring them to register, we then know who is going door-to-door in our community and it's, it's a safety factor. So if someone comes in, they're required to give identification, then if we get calls or the police department gets calls, we know who's out there. The alternative is, if they don't, we don't know the legitimacy of these people going door-to-door, we don't know if they're associated with real businesses, we don't necessarily know their identification. So that's the real reason for the registration, is it's, it's tied to public safety.
And it, and it's generally appropriate and this sort of thing, if somebody's out selling gutters without having gotten a license, it's, it's generally appropriate to give a ticket, make them pay a fine, as opposed to a misdemeanor that goes on their criminal record that, you know, may not really be appropriate for, for that level of, you know, severity of a crime. But what's nice about it is that they keep doing it, you know, if it's the second time they're back in front of the judge, the third time, you know, he can, he can issue, you know, contempt-type, type charges and actually throw them in jail at that point. So there is still a hammer, you know, if you got a repeat offender who isn't getting the message.
What's your training?
Yeah, so a profession that comes to mind for, to me, and I'm assuming it would be covered with this, but there's a lot of folks out there selling natural gas, doing competition with DTE, trying to get a wholesale rate, knocking on doors, that would fall under this.
Yes.
I love Girl Scout cookies, so.
I love Girl Scouts.
Make sure that one's there.
Any other comments, questions? Not, is there a motion to introduce post-ordinance number three eighteen, an ordinance to establish peddling and solicitation activities as civil infractions?
Some of them.
Support.
Motion, support. Any other comments or questions? This is to introduce, and we'll take a motion to table. But first of all, Marcy, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Steenstra?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Elderslos?
Yes.
Merricka?
Yes.
Norco?
Yes.
And Merrimass?
Yes. Now, is there a motion to table, proposed ordinance number three eighteen?
Motion.
Support.
And support. Any other comments, questions about that? All those in favor of table, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Great. Next item is a consent agenda, and approval would be in the best interest of the city. Got a couple reports, the fire EMS report, the whole year, two thousand and twenty-four, busy year. We had two thousand one hundred and thirty-five calls, something like that. That's a lot. Also, the investment and treasures report from February, also the minutes from the Don Com Development Authority meeting of just last, yeah, couple weeks ago, I guess. And also to set the second budget worth session for Monday, April twenty-one, twenty twenty-five, the Clean Water Plant at six P M. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and investment checks for the city?
So, support.
Motion, support. Any comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Truist?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Elderslos?
Yes.
Merricka?
Yes.
Norco?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
And Merrimass?
Yes.
Griffin, city managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we're going to start with requesting the awarding of a bid for the repaving of the Kenowa Avenue roadway. So there's a couple memos in your packet, one from Charlie, as well as one from the city engineer with Prime and Newhoff that details the requests to authorize the repaving of Kenowa from Forty-Fourth to Thirty-Sixth Street. This is a project you've heard us talk a little bit about for some time now. I mean, first off, it's a project that is included in the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget, but uniquely, it's also one of the projects that was included in the Grand Valley Metro Council's Transportation Improvement Plan, which means a large chunk of this project is actually state money coming in. Because of that, the bid process for this project was coordinated by MDOT. They conducted that in early March and reviewed the bids. And ultimately, what we're bringing before you all this evening is the low bid that was submitted by Black Gold Transport in the amount of just shy of five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. MDOT does validate these. Our engineers also looked through them. So what we have is, in your memo that I put together for you all, is a bunch of different numbers. You have the number that we're looking to get approved this evening, which was the low bid, but also an update on what the total, total project cost is estimated to be. This bid was actually below what the engineer originally anticipated for a project. Everyone back on wood, because we have not been hearing that very often over the last couple of years. Quite often, they come back a lot higher. But with all of that being said, the total project cost is estimated to be about seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Some of this has already been expended, a lot of the pre-design work that we do, you know, in the year leading up to even being able to bid out a project. But with all that being said, MDOT would be contributing four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars to this project, with the local streets fund covering the remaining three hundred and thirteen thousand. The project is anticipated to be able to start, actually, on June second, and expected to be completed in about a month. So with all that being said, this is a pretty long road project, just in terms of miles, obviously on the west side of our community. But it is being recommended this evening that city council authorize the repaving of Forty-Fourth Avenue and also approve the estimated budget and award the construction bid to Black and Gold Transport. Charlie, did you have anything to add?
Okay. I do have a question. I noticed that the bid was something, thirty-five percent under the engineer's estimate. Charlie, have you had experience with Black Gold Transport?
Yes.
Okay.
Not the best of experiences, but because of bid to MDOT, you have no choice.
Okay. So Griffin, now there's two things that you're looking for. One is the specific bid, and then the other is the whole.
Authorization of the project, yes.
So is there a motion to award the Kenowa resurfacing, resurfacing project to Black Gold Transport in the amount of five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars?
Support.
Support. Any questions? So I was going to ask the same question you did. I've never, I've never heard, I don't think, of them doing work for us.
They, years ago, they did a little bit for us, and quality isn't the best, so.
Do we have anything that we can fall back on if the quality doesn't meet our standards?
Yeah, there's, there's like a warranty, but we will, I've already contacted Warren Burgington. I'm going to try to have at least two good inspectors out there rather than one, keep an eye on them. They're aware of them too, so.
And the other thing to give you all, I guess, a little bit of confidence is, you know, all of these bids also have to be validated by MDOT, because I know that was something I think we were concerned about, is when you see, particularly with the road bid environment we've been in, and you see a bid kind of this percentage below, I think the first thing we always think about is, okay, did they bid the project at the true specs? And MDOT goes through and validates all of that. So we can say, you know, with that level of confidence that we are going to be getting what we've requested. We'll just have to go through and hopefully have this contractor start.
One of the big things in this, in this bid was, there was three out of the four contractors left a lot of money on the table for mobilization and traffic control. Typically, it went, like mobilization in this project was eighty thousand dollars, and there was only one of them hit that. That's where a lot of contractors will make a lot of money, because they can bid right to the highest amount. But three of them left money there and in the traffic control. So it's very strange. I haven't seen that before.
Okay, so we've got motion support. Any other questions, comments? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Elderslos?
Yes.
Merricka?
Yes.
Norco?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
And Merrimass?
Yes. Now, is there a motion to approve the estimated budget from Warren Burgington for this project in the amount of seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the best interest of the city?
So, support.
Motion, support. Any discussion? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Elderslos?
Yes.
Merricka?
Yes.
Norco?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
And Merrimass?
Griffin, escrow policy?
Yes. So moving on to a short conversation about a proposed policy. Matt's going to give you all a little bit of detail, but I'll just start with, you know, this proposed policy is not something that we're looking for any action on this evening. We just want to introduce it to you all, give you kind of a little bit of background, and then have any discussion you all would like to have. And then, based on your feedback, we can consider bringing it back at a later time.
Thank you for the great introduction. As you know, we're neck deep in budget season. As part of that, every year, we look at our fee schedule, or specifically, community development fee schedules, site plan applications, rezoning applications, special land use applications, the whole list of them, a variance application. And as we begin to look at these and look at what some of our more recent costs have been, for instance, the last several months, the planning commission has approved four site plans. I looked at what our professional costs are to renew these applications, the planning through McKenna, the engineering through Warren Burgington, legal through Barton. Some of these costs are quite astounding. Our site plan application fee is three hundred and fifty dollars. Now, there's a reason why we may want to keep it low. Generally, we try to keep our fees in the middle of the pack. And I looked at a bunch of fees today from across the region, and we're still kind of in the middle of the pack. However, we cannot let our taxpayers offset the cost for a developer who's working on a project. A couple of the projects on the low side, the costs were eight hundred and sixty-one dollars for all these professional fees for one project. Another project, it was over forty-one hundred dollars. Again, with having an application fee low and having these costs high, again, we're leaning on our taxpayers to offset these funds. So the, what we're proposing is an escrow policy. So if someone comes in with a project, a site plan, a special land use, a rezoning, any of the, you know, they'd have to submit twelve hundred or fifteen hundred dollars per the draft policy into an account through the finance department. And as we'd have these professional services, those costs would be paid out of that account. Once the account got down to twenty-five percent per the draft policy, they have to have to re-admit more money. If they're at the end of the project, once it's completed, the remaining funds, they'd be refunded back to the applicant. Escrow fees are permitted by the zoning and abiding act. A lot of cities use these. We have required them in the past for large projects, the Grant Castle, the Elderwood P U D, perhaps even the Bucktown P U D and some others. But we've never had a standard policy. Again, we like to standardize things. We, we, for the, things should be standardized. It shouldn't be willy-nilly. So the draft policy standardizes this policy and would require any future development to, especially a large development. We're not interested in requiring some resident who's applying for a variance for, again, they use the example of a shed. They want a larger shed. We're not going to require these for that. These are larger scale commercial developments that should be paying their fair share, not our residents. So again, that's kind of it. Everything in a nutshell, I'd be happy to answer the questions that you may have.
So if I can just highlight before we get to questions, you know, this is a practice that's becoming more and more common among local units of government, you know, particularly as projects continue to become more complex and require additional types of professional service reviews. Requiring escrow deposits is really the way local units of government have been able to ensure that the community is being protected by still allowing these types of reviews to happen, but at the same time, making sure that private development is paying for private development. One of the things you always have to be careful of is, if we don't think about using this type of offset or cost recovery, the other option is, we can just continue to raise our standard fees. But if we just continue to raise our standard fees, that starts to become inequitable for smaller, simpler projects that we normally think our residents would do, you know, as opposed to more commercial type development. The other concern that I think gets raised a lot when these types of policies get proposed is, well, is this going to scare away development? Is this going to get people to not want to invest in our community? And I can tell you from my experience, and I think the city attorney can speak to it, is that private developers are willing to pay the true costs. They just want it to be done consistently and kind of transparently upfront. So by having a policy that outlines, this is how we're going to handle these types of projects, instead of getting into a position where we're picking and choosing what projects need to have escrow deposits, we can better communicate with these projects upfront. They can better estimate what the true costs of their projects are going to be, and probably most importantly, we can make sure that the taxpayer is not unduly subsidizing certain costs associated with these developments. So Dave, I don't know, I know you have some experience with these types of policies as well. Do you have any thoughts?
Well, I think you both did a great job explaining the policy, sort of the first principles reasoning behind it, in terms of, you know, making sure that we've got fairness here by allocating costs to the developers that are going to benefit from the permit and not to the residents. So I think that's important. I agree with you. It's not going to impact development. Any development where you would be assessing these costs, the costs that are going to be paid for review by the city are going to pale in comparison to the engineering costs and the legal costs and the other costs that the developer is going to be paying on one of these projects. These are probably, typically be projects that are, you know, multimillion dollar projects. You know, they're not minor projects where the city's going to, you know, be requiring a large fee for permit review. So I don't think it's going to impact development. I'll say that, you know, in representing developers, what I want to find, or what I want to see is a, is a community that is businesslike, that is organized, that has predictability, that has transparency, and all of those things Granville has. And this will further add to the predictability and the transparency of the way that you administer permit applications in the city. And as, as assistant city manager noted, there is authority to do this, both in statutes and then in interpreting case law that have interpreted those statutes. So I think there's a basis to do this as well, and it's very common.
The other thing I like about a policy like this, and in full transparency, I've helped implement policies like this in every community I've worked for. One of the things that you'll find is, there's not a lot of room for a developer to push back on the charges, because they're directly tied to the true costs of the review. So we're going to be taking actual invoiced costs from these professional services. Those are the amounts you directly deduct from the escrow policies. So it's a very, I guess, transparent or clear cost recovery, but at the same time, what's always been important for me in the professional roles I've served in, is it also ensures that our organizations and our communities are still going to be able to get the professional support that we need when reviewing these projects, to make sure that our organizations are protected with appropriate planning and engineering and legal type reviews. So really, what we just wanted to bring this to you all for this evening was just to get your initial feedback, to make sure that this was something, I guess, one, you understand, but two, you are, you are comfortable with. You know, if so, if there's any kind of specific questions or input you have on the policy, we would be happy to hear that, make any tweaks. And then our plan would be to bring this back at some point prior to the adoption of the upcoming budget, with any potential changes we have to the fee schedule, and really get a policy like this adopted to go hand in hand with our community development fee schedule moving forward.
Makes sense to me. And like Matt said, there's no reason taxpayers should be subsidizing their costs, so.
Thank you.
If, if there's no other thoughts or comments on that, or if you do, please feel free and reach out to me individually. Just a few other notes to share. First off, we had a really successful community stakeholder meeting last Thursday on March twentieth. We had almost twenty-eight people in attendance from both the Granville Little League and the surrounding neighborhoods. What I can share is, you know, at times, the meeting got a little tense. You can definitely tell that this is an emotional topic for a lot of people, but the takeaways that I had was, there's a lot of appreciation that the city is willing to organize and facilitate this process. There's also some skepticism about whether or not, regarding what changes can or will potentially happen, and I think that's understandable. So with all that, you know, being said, the next steps are, one, the dispute resolution center of West Michigan, who we are partnering with, these people who attended the meeting, many of them signed up to participate in initial intake meetings, where they're with an opportunity to kind of share their, their more specific feedback and comments and concerns and potential solutions with the facilitator. And what we will do is, after they've had a chance to work through all of that, we'll get back together and have a conference with a smaller group to try to start to work towards what an agreement could look like moving forward. That is likely still going to take a matter of weeks, if not a month or so. And with Little League starting here soon, I'm also working with the police department to put together a letter that we will be asking the Little League to share with all of their participants, neighbor, or excuse me, participants, parents, and potential guests, just to offer some friendly reminders regarding where you can park and where you can't park, and what it means to trespass, and what it means to litter, and to try to be proactive and jump ahead of some of these concerns. I think, one, I definitely want to make sure we are continuing to be genuine in the sense of wanting to work through some of the concerns we're hearing, and at the same time, putting a reminder letter out that, out there like that also gives us a lot of grounds when it comes to the point where we might have to start issuing tickets or taking specific enforcement actions. So the letter should be coming out in the upcoming weeks, and please stay tuned. I'll share more updates about the facilitated. more updates about the facilitated process as we continue to work through that. I do know the mayor, as well as Councilmember Merrinka, were able to attend, so I definitely appreciate you both being there. I think it was a good first step. Based on some of the comments at last week's budget workshop, specifically in regard to the potential tax appeal from the mall, I did just wanna update the council that I've had some really positive conversations with both Kent County and the school district, kind of bringing them up to speed on where we're at. Charlie Decatur, the assessor, has put together some summary information that I've shared with them, and we will likely be having some meetings in the upcoming weeks to make sure we're all on the same page on what that appeal could mean for our community in terms of the taxable value amount being contested. That would be the first step in regard to potentially getting some support should we have to move forward with a full tax tribunal. I can tell you, my initial conversations were really positive, and I think they're very much as a mindset of, we're all in this together. So, I'll continue to keep you guys all up to speed on that as well. And then lastly, I just wanted to highlight the single page I put in front of you all that didn't get a chance to get added to the packet last week. There was an invitation from the Grand Valley Metro Council seeking public comments on the two thousand twenty-six to two thousand twenty-nine tip. This is that transportation improvements plan, which is really how they decide what state money gets allocated to various local projects. Charlie's done a really good job for our organization, trying to make sure that we get projects on that plan. We really average about, about four of every five years, we have a project on that list, this year, it being the Kenawa Avenue project that you all addressed earlier. But with all that being said, please feel free and take a look at that. Please feel free and share it with members of the community. They are seeking comment at some open houses and virtual meetings coming up in April. And I'll just end again with, we do have several projects on that plan. I think Century Center's coming up. I think there's a Forty-Fourth Street project maybe in a couple of years. So, again, the fact that we get about one project a year on that plan has served us really well. With all that being said, those are the comments I have, or updates I have this evening. Happy to answer anything else you guys may have.
Questions for Griffin? Time for Councilmember comments. Jared, let's start with you.
You know, the only thing that I had on my radar was, I've gotten a couple of questions in the last couple of weeks about what I'm assuming is the MetroNet digging. And so, I was wondering if there was like a schedule of what neighborhood they maybe came to see next. You know, I actually had a neighbor say, why are all these flags in my yard? Why are they spraying this, and this, and this? And so, I said, the MetroNet, and I went. Do they have like a...
MetroNet actually puts door hangers on, and they put, I think they do a mailing of cars to the neighborhoods that they're coming to.
Okay.
To let you know they're coming in your neighborhood.
Okay, yeah. So, I've gotten questions from several neighborhoods, and I haven't asked residents about that. My personal neighborhood, we did not get those, because there was a bunch of markings being made this week, so I don't know if that's something.
We get it up, we get a daily sheet of what streets they're working on in old Grand Rapids area, so I can share that out to if I need to.
I don't even know what they're working on every day, but, you know, certain parts of Grandville may be helpful, just so we can answer these questions, but.
At our next meeting, I can make a comment.
Fantastic. Oh, is it?
Wow.
I don't know if anything else bad happens.
Ted?
Going back to the mall, in the news today, there was big announcement that Celebration Cinema and Polgar doing a huge renovation. And I was curious about the news on Macy's. Do we know anything, Griffin?
All we know at this time is that the local Macy's store survived the last round of closings. We also know that there is a local developer who's been in touch with them about potentially acquiring that building. I wouldn't jump ahead to what that necessarily means for the Macy's store. It's not uncommon for Macy's to essentially sell their building and then do a leaseback for a number of years. But at this time, all I know is, we have a developer who's been in touch with Macy's about potentially acquiring that anchor store. It's the same owner who acquired the Yonkers.
Oh, is it?
And he's interested in doing some similar types of kind of both exterior aesthetic work, and should the Macy's no longer occupy that space, I think internal kind of white box. So, there's gonna be a meeting with the Business Relations Committee later this week, I believe.
Thank you.
Yes, third, thank you, sorry. I have some different meetings, maybe confused in my head. But yes, this week, that the Business Relations Committee will have the opportunity to kind of get an initial overview of what this developer is thinking about doing, and provide some feedback on whether or not that's something we wanna partner on or not.
Some interesting things to watch.
Absolutely.
Then also, it was a great Capcom conference. We heard a lot of good things, and I'd like to direct your attention to what Griffin had summarized about the roads. That's part of the MML Legislative Team's work with the legislature, talking about funding roads, and some cool stuff happened right while we were at the conference, and Griffin can better explain it. But after we talked in our budgets session about three years down the road, being short of money, and what are we gonna do, it looks like we may be getting a big chunk of change from the state of Michigan on some of the things they're doing.
Sure, yeah. So, last week, the State House passed a slate of bills that will pretty substantially change the way that local units of government receive funding from the state to maintain and upgrade its road network. My understanding is, it would eliminate or change the way that gas is taxed, and allocate the gas tax proceeds directly to roadwork. A lot of that would go to state roads, but it would also increase the pot substantially that is then disseminated to local units of government based on the miles of roads it adds, not so different than Act fifty-one right now. So, with all that being said, I don't want to get anyone too excited right now. This is through one of the two branches of the state legislature. It would also conceivably need to go to the governor for approval. I know both parties, as well as the governor, have kind of been speaking about addressing the way that roads are funded in a long-term and sustainable way as being a priority. So, I think that gives us some level of confidence that something might happen, but I also don't wanna jump ahead of ourselves right now. But nevertheless, it was a great point. It was definitely something that was exciting while we were lancing that data, to hear some of that stuff moving. And I can tell you, I've got some colleagues that I respect a lot, that I saw a lot of excitement in their eye, and that's not something that I see all the time. So, it's definitely something to worth continuing. It's definitely something that's worth continuing to monitor, 'cause it could potentially have some pretty impactful effects for us.
Yeah, that was, that was exciting. And just the bipartisanship of the state legislature and the governor's office working on this is encouraging in light of what we see nationally. And then the other takeaway from the, other, a lot of takeaways, but the other one I wanna make a comment on was a section on leadership in the times of tragedy, where Mayors Burnett from Rochester Hills, and Mayor, former Mayor Bliss from Grand Rapids, talked about their experiences with shootings. And it prompted a discussion between Griffin and myself about a critical incident plan. We probably have one somewhere, but to take a look at it, and to see who's gonna be doing the talking, and who's prepared to work the public relations, you know, aside from the police department, the first responders. So, anyway, that's something maybe we talk about when we do some of the long-range planning. That's all I have.
Justin?
Nothing.
Josh?
Nothing for me.
Randy?
Nothing for me.
Well, I just wanted to echo what Griffin said about the meeting with the Little League and the neighbors. It seems like the facilitators, Josh, seemed like they were a good fit, I think. And so, Griffin, thank you for thinking of that. I think it's a great first step, and something that I don't think has to pride before for the dispute resolution center of West Michigan. So, I'm very encouraged with that. Also, I got a couple nice things. I had received emails, and I got the hard copy. Grandville has been named again as Tree City USA, and also earned again Growth Award, and that's recognition from the Arborday Foundation. So, those are some good things. And like Kyle said, the tree sale's coming up, so anybody who's listening or here tonight, and lives in the city of Grandville, please go to grandvillertreeproject.org and find out more information. Deadline's coming up, so please act soon. Great, that's it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So, support.
All of us in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
And the opposition, please say no. Great, thanks, everybody. Have a good evening.